Good evening, I'd like to welcome everybody to the May 24 regular council meeting. And if you please rise and join us in the porch of the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I'd like to take a quick second to welcome Barbara to the team. I think you'll find that it's an enjoyable group to work with most of the time.
Point of order, Mr. Chairman?
Sir Bill.
Has Council Healy been duly sworn and taken the oath of office?
I believe last Friday a week.
Yes, I have.
Okay, thank you.
Great. Alrighty, you're welcome. First announcements on February 24 this year, Carsten Hahn, known by all as Bud, the current holder of the Boston Post Kane, passed away at the age of 101. The town of Merrimack has begun a search for the oldest resident to become the new Boston Post Kane holder. To qualify as the oldest resident, one must be a physical resident of Merrimack and have resided in Merrimack for at least 25 years. If you qualify or know someone who does, send the nomination form to the town of Merrimack. Attention, Boston Post Kane, 6 Babu's Lake Road in Merrimack, 03054. Nomination forms are available at the town website, merrimacknh.gov/BostonPostKane, or at the town hall, and the town will be accepting nominations until Friday, June 29. And please contact the town manager's office with questions at 424-2331, or you can email Kristen@kwardner@merrimacknh.gov. Retreat was scheduled for tomorrow, it has been postponed, we'll be discussing that later this evening. Our next regular meeting, next two regular meetings will be Thursday, June 14 at 7:00 p.m., Thursday, June 28 at 7:00 p.m., all here in the Matthew Thornton Room. Paul, do you have any good?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The June book sale will be Saturday, June 2, and Sunday, June 3 with the Friends of the Merrimack Library. Members only, pre-sale is Friday, June 1 at 5:15 p.m. Please check the library's website for specific times. You can contact library director Yvette Kouser for information about volunteering at the sale. The Parks and Recreation Department invites you to join them on Friday, June 8 for their first free outdoor movie night of the summer at Abbey Griffin Park. They will be showing Murder on the Orient Express, and it will begin at 8:15 p.m. This movie was sponsored by the Merrimack Lions Club. If you have any questions, you can reach out to Parks and Recreation at 882-1046. Finally, the Public Works Department and Eversource are pleased to announce a free Free-On day at the transfer station. Say that 10 times fast.
Free-On.
On Saturday, June 9, Merrimack residents will be able to bring their up to three residential-based Free-On appliances to the transfer station for free of charge. The items will be collected, included are refrigerators, freezers, dehumidifiers, and air conditioners. Residents will be required to complete a short form with their name, address, product make, model, and serial number. Transfer station staff are required to cut the electric cords of all appliances and ensure they are not going to be reused. Eversource will reimburse the town for the disposal expense of all these units collected. Please note, this is a one-day event only, so put, please put it on your calendar for June 9. Thank you.
Eileen.
Sorry I'm late. I just wanted to ask, do they still use Free-On?
It's a different type, I believe.
Different type?
Yeah.
Yeah?
From the old day.
Not as dangerous, but...
It's not as cold either, but...
Not as cold, okay. Bye, thank you.
But...
Just an air conditioning?
Refrigerators, anything Free-On based it sounds like.
Still?
Oh, yes, as far as that, I believe so.
Okay, thank you.
Alrighty. Any further announcements? No PFO updates? Bill or Peter, do you have anything? Sir William?
So the short answer is, we have no updates. And as it relates to the New Hampshire Trickenwater and Groundwater Commission, my understanding is we will, we may only have one meeting over the summer, and we'll reconvene with looking at projects beginning in September.
Very good, okay. Thank you. On a highway garage update, I will let Paul do it, but they're moving along at a pretty nice pace already.
They are, they're moving along. Today, I received a request to ask Eversource to move the two poles on Turkey Hill Road so they can do the construction entrance. They're moving on a good pace, clip, they're moving the dirt, they getting ready to start laying out the building and selecting, doing the grades as needed. So hopefully, if all goes well, we'll start seeing some foundation forms put up in the next month.
Excellent. Thanks, Paul. Nancy?
I'm sorry, I, sorry. I should have asked this during the PFOA. I was hesitating to what I'm going to anyway. I know that there's been some activity related to Watson Park and things that have been found and concern expressed about possibly PFOA levels at various sites. I had a question, whether Bill or Peter, who has been as designated liaison with this concerned citizen group, whether they've been spoken to related to any of these things? And my understanding is they have not.
Correct.
Okay. My only...
To amplify my correct is, the inquiries that I made were solely my inquiries that I made directly based on communication that came through from Ms. Shaw. As it related, I had the opportunity to process that information, which developed into that subsequent email regarding a larger set of questions. So, the larger set of questions that I posed to Eileen and the rest of the council germinated from me and from me alone, from nobody else.
And that's, that was concerning to me. Because I think, my opinion was, that the two of you volunteered to be designated as a basic liaison for citizen concerns in this council. And it's not going that way. You're not being taken advantage of. And I don't know why that's happening. I think that you should be utilized the way you were designed to be utilized. And you're not, and I'm not sure what we can do about that. Do you know what I'm saying?
I understand what you're saying, but I didn't talk with Pete. And if you want to throw the flag at me for not talking to Pete before firing off the email, that's fine.
No, no, I was even...
It feels like you're throwing the flag at me, council.
Other than that, I'm not, I'm not responding to your email. I'm talking about concern expressed by citizens about various things that are going on in the town.
As it relates to what they sent to Clark Friesy as opposed to...
All those things.
As opposed to you.
Okay, so I misunderstood the direction of where you were going, and I apologize.
Yeah, I didn't mean to intend...
No, no, I, I apologize.
Inmate, it was yours. Yours was an example, but it was not the intent of my question.
Okay.
Peter, did you want to respond?
Well, I guess I'm trying to figure out, is, your, your inquiry is, why aren't more citizens taking advantage or using Bill and I as a liaison?
Any of the group, yes. There is a designated group that are working as citizens on this, and you are the people that are the go-betweens between citizens and us. And, and you're not being included in it. We're hearing from periphery. We're hearing from DES, who's contacting the town manager. That, even if we're not the ones to do the activity, you're the ones who should be spoken to, in my opinion, and maybe I'm off. But you're the one who should be spoken to, "By the way, guys, we would like support from the town here. This is what we're doing. Is there anything you can do to help us?" Da-da-da-da. And then that would be communicated to us through you guys, and then we would have a legitimate discussion.
Okay.
There's none of that. And that's unfortunate, I think it's a missed opportunity. Pete, yeah, I'm sorry.
Yeah, and shortly after this past April's elections with the MVD, a couple of the new members of the board reached out, as well as one of the members of the Citizens for, Concerned Citizens for Clean Water, and asked Bill if we would still be interested in...
I said yes, absolutely.
...being involved, and we said, yeah, we both agreed right away that we would be. And they advised us that they'd get back to us. So, I don't know whether it's the time of year, it's busy, or what's have you, but we haven't heard anything further. I guess we're waiting.
But the, but the citizens have been busy. And they've not been busy including you. That's my concern, I'm sorry.
So, and to respond to that, Council Harrington, I appreciate where you're coming from. I really, I really do. But I can't, I can't compel somebody in the community not to...
It's not your responsibility.
Okay.
You're available, you're not being taken advantage of.
Right.
In a positive way.
Okay.
Eileen.
Also, from my own perspective, I feel like I could be doing some legwork for people and answering questions as we did once we found out through the grapevine that people were asking questions. They were never asked of me. They, I got emails and responses back from Clark@DES so that I knew that somebody was concerned. And then we took action. But, you know, it's, that's what we're here for. Where, you're here for that, and they should use you, and I'm here for that, and they should use me, rather than going to the state first. Or you can include the state, but you should include us as well, because that's what we're here for.
So I guess, I guess my statement would be, I would encourage the citizen groups to remember that you two are designated liaisons, and that we are here to be of assistance as much as possible, even if it's information-giving only. But in the meantime, we're hearing it on the sideline, social media, which is very inappropriate. Unless we have a designated social media liaison, that's not the place to have a discussion. The discussion is here, or through you, or through the town manager. And I just think it's a missed opportunity for all people involved, so that's just my opinion. So there.
Was that your version of the mic drop?
Yeah.
Thank you, Nancy. All right, if there are no further announcements or comments, okay, move on. Comments from the press and public? If you'd like to address the council, you can either take a seat here, or the mic over here. Wendy?
Oh, you know me.
No.
A few things. First of all, Nancy, you just said, and I've got to reply to this, you said, "Nobody's asking if there's anything that, that you can do to help us. I'm here every single meeting asking for help."
You are appropriate in your case. There's a lot of other things...
That's like the first time I've ever been...
There's a lot of other things also going on that we don't know about, except peripherally.
I get it, I get it. But, but...
You're the, you're the exception, because you're right.
Well, no, there's, there's quite a few other people.
You come before us and inform us.
Okay.
And you have your, you take advantage of the venue to make your opinions known.
I do. All right. So, there's a few things. So, just giving you an update on our filter, it should be installed tomorrow. We've got, we finally found a plumber who's familiar with the system. So we'll have a whole house filtration system, as well as a reverse osmosis system in our kitchen. So that should clean up our water. Now, the fight becomes for my neighbors who have private wells, who may not be able to afford filtration systems, or who, through no fault of their own, are drinking contaminated water. So I will continue to be here, even though we have a filtration system in our house, hopefully by tomorrow. Just in the last week, it has been reported that the EPA, under Director Scott Pruitt, is sitting on an environmental report about contaminated water, specifically with regards to PFOAs. And the, the conclusion of this report, which has not been released, is that the governmental maximum, or minimum level of 70 ppt is six times too high. And this is a government report. The government report is suggesting that the, the highest amount for human health is 12 parts per trillion. They're not releasing this report because they're saying that it would be a PR nightmare for corporations. There's absolutely no statement about impact to human health. It's all about the bottom line for corporations. When this report is released, and not if, but when, because we know about it, when it is released, the value will be reduced to 12 parts per trillion, which puts our town in crisis. My well, again, I'm 3.5 miles from St. Cobain, is 45 parts per trillion. If they say that the, the maximum lever, level for safe, safe health is 12 parts per trillion, that means every single private well in our town needs to be tested. We can't, it, it puts the whole town in trouble. So, so, you know, Peter, you and, and Bill, you're on, you're supposed to be working. I'm not, I'm not on the committee that you're on, but, but the town needs to, to anticipate that, that the, the level is going to be lowered. And what are we, as a town, going to do about this? We've got to protect our people. The government now is saying that this is a carcinogenic substance that is way too high. I mean, they're doing what we have, what we had wanted our legislators to do. So it's coming down the road. Go, oh.
Sure.
Is this just public timing?
It's normally public timing, but you, sure.
Wendy, and I, and I saw on WMUR Sunday, Senator Shaheen, I don't know if you saw that, she made reference to this.
Right.
And, you know...
So did Maggie, Maggie, Senator Hassan.
My question is, and you're here, and I think you do a good job when you come in here and you're talking to us, my question to you is, are you going to the MVD meetings as well to talk to them about this?
Because of time commitments, and I'm spread real thin, I'm on a million different groups, and we have, we have representatives that go to MVD. I have gone to MVD meetings, and they shut me down because I have a private well. Even though I pay MVD, I pay for the fire hydrant, which still makes me a customer. If I go to Shaw's and buy one pack of gum, I'm still a customer. So, they, they won't listen to me, or they've, they've indicated that I'm not as important as, as a regular customer.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Wendy.
You're welcome.
Anyone further?
I'm sorry. Do you mind if I ask you a question?
No, no.
What, because I'd like to, if you could send me a link to the report or the information that you had, I'd be very interested in here, seeing it.
I can't remember if it was AP or New York Times, but I'll send you the link.
Seacoast Online.
Okay.
Seacoast Online, Portsmouth, I already read it.
Also, what, what agency has...
EPA.
The EPA did the report that said the 12...
The EPA did the report. The EPA is sitting on this report, because it's a pub, a PR nightmare, is what they're saying to corporations.
Okay. Thank you.
It also be a PR nightmare for many towns in the United States.
It's...
It's not just corporations.
You know, I mean, the water situation is, in, everyone should have their water tested. Everyone should be drinking filtered water, because it's, it's being contaminated all across the United States. It's not just New, it's not just Merrimack anymore, or other towns. Anything else?
Thank you.
All right. This evening, there's no recognitions, resignations, or retirements. Under appointments, our first item is Julie Christensen-Collins is here with the Steering Committee of the Hillsborough County South Adult Drug Court to present us an overview on the drug court and what it's all about. Oh, I thought you were coming, I'm sorry. Oh, yeah, Paul?
Doesn't have to start now, I'm just doing an introduction, so it's...
Okay. Whenever.
Oh, boy.
How's that?
That's pressure.
That's...
Good evening.
Good evening, welcome.
Chairman Rathaus and Councilors. My name is Tom Monahan, and I'm the chairman of the Steering Committee for the Hillsborough County Superior Court, Adult Drug Court, Southern Hillsborough County Adult Drug Court, and have been, been the chairman since its inception a few years ago. Along with me, Jay Leonard, Dave Tenzer, two Steering Committee members, and our executive director, Julie Christensen-Collins. Just going to introduce Dave Tenzer, but I just want to say that we're here, and also, Chief Roy is here, who has been very helpful in, in leading the commu, your community at the drug steering, at the drug committee meetings, and has been very helpful, and we look forward to bringing, doing more with the town of Merrimack. But I'm here, there's not an ask. We're here to, to just tell you the story of the, of the drug court. It's a real good story, we believe. And, you know, with that, I, I will introduce Dave Tenzer, who's a prosecutor with the Hillsborough Attorney's Office from 2007 until 2017. From 2014 and 16, he was a team member of the Hillsborough County Adult Drug Court. And after leaving the office for private practice, Dave joined the Hillsborough South Drug Steering Committee and currently runs his own law practice in Nashua. A big addition to the Steering Committee. And he being involved with the drug court as a prosecutor from day one, he can, he can convey the message a heck of a lot better than I can. So, thank you.
Perfect.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and members of the committee. We appreciate you having us here tonight, and so...
Excuse me, can you just move the mic further?
I will, there you go. We appreciate you having us here tonight, just to give you some information about the drug court and the work it's been doing since 2014. Out of the Hillsborough County Superior Court in Nashua, but really for all the towns in Southern Hillsborough County. As Mr. Monahan mentioned, I was a member of the drug court team when it first started in 2014. And really, it started here, it started in Nashua and Hillsborough South, because the judges finally realized that they, that they needed, not just the judges, but prosecutors, that they, everyone needed some alternatives to what we had been doing for so many years in the criminal justice system. When I started in, in 2007, I started fresh out of law school, and quickly, by 2010, 2011, it was almost unrecognizable, the, the criminal justice system, because the volume of cases had exploded so much. And we were dealing with people who were getting arrested for drug crimes, whether it was possessions, or, you know, small drug sales, or theft-related crimes. And they would, we'd either send them to jail, put them on probation, and hope that would deter them. It didn't deter them, they would come out still addicted to drugs, commit more crimes, end up at state prison, hope that state prison would deter them, that wouldn't deter them. And so, I think finally, everyone got together and said, "Enough's enough, we have to do some things a little bit differently." And so, the drug court model came to New Hampshire right around 2013, 14. First out in Rockingham County, I believe, but then shortly after, in, in Hillsborough County. So, the question is, why drug court? And I, I touched on it a little bit. Eighty percent of offenders abuse drugs and alcohol. You know, a, a large majority of the crimes that you'll see are motivated, especially that come either in district court or, or superior court, motivated by someone's either mental health or, or drug addiction. A lot of the folks that we see in the drug court have co-occurring disorders, where they're both addicted to drugs and have mental health issues that, that need to be addressed. These are, these are national statistics. Nearly 50% of prison and jail inmates are clinically addicted. As I said, if, if they're not receiving the treatment while they're in jail, even sometimes if they are receiving treatment in jail, it's not as effective as treatment can be in the community if they want to take advantage of it. About 60% of individuals arrested test positive for illicit drugs, and 60 to 80% of drug abusers commit a new crime after release from incarceration. And so that's what we're trying to tackle with the drug court. I, I like to tell people, drug court is not about the, the crime that someone's committed, it's about, it's about the next victim, it's about the next burglary they're going to commit, because they don't get a, get help for their, their drug issues. Drug court is not something new, or something that, that started here in New Hampshire. This is a national model that's been, been practiced in other areas for probably about 20 years. It started in Southern Florida in the early 90s, late 80s, early 90s, because of the drug issue that they had down there. And because of that, it's a model that's been studied. It's a model that has been, that there's data out there for, to show that, you know, if done right, the drug court model reduces recidivism and makes the community safer as a whole. So, this is not someone from Hillsborough South, but this is a, this is a participant and defendant who has been through the drug court program in another part of the country. This is her booking photo for when she was first arrested. And you'll see later on in the presentation what she looks like at the end of her participation in drug court. So the drug court model is, is different than a straight probation sentence, which people may, may go on when they are, after they've been convicted of a crime. In all sentences before, but I'm happy to take questions at, at any point if anyone has questions. So, the drug court model, it's a, it's a complete team model. It ensures more compliance with treatment, which significantly lowers the treatment dropout rates compared with non-judicially supervised treatment. Drug court participants are, are strictly, strictly monitored, both in treatment for any drug, for their drug issues, mental health issues, as well as, you know, they're, they're monitored just their free time in the community. You know, if they're able to, they're, they're made to work while they're in the program. They're made to pay back any restitution that's owed as a result of the crimes that they've committed. And, you know, they're, they're taught pro-social skills, so that once they get out of the, the drug court program, which typically lasts 12 to 18 months, they're able to hopefully be successful and continue their sobriety, continue giving back to the community, which many of them have, have never done throughout their adult lives. So the drug court studies show that drug courts reduce crime as much as 45% more than other alternatives. Again, these are, these are national statistics. But what I'll say, what I've seen here in New Hampshire, I, I practice now, you know, in, in Nashua, but also Manchester and Concord. And what I see is that the same names appear on the docket in Concord that appear on the, on the docket in Nashua. Our issues, people don't stay in one area, they travel up and down either Route 3 or 93. They get arrested in Rockingham County, they get arrested in Manchester, get arrested in Nashua. And so, what the state of New Hampshire has done is, they have, the judiciary is now running the drug court program, now funding the drug court program in every county in the state, which is a good thing. And hopefully, those same people, you know, even if they're getting in trouble in Merrimack County, they're addressing it up there, and not coming down here, and vice versa. You know, importantly as well, drug courts save money. Again, the national studies show that every dollar invested in drug courts saves as much as $3.36 the criminal justice costs alone. So this would include incarceration. There are various studies which try to measure how much it costs to incarcerate somebody for the year. I think the studies I've seen here in New Hampshire, for a year incarceration, either at the jail or state prison, could be anywhere from $20,000 to $30,000, maybe even more. Drug court participants were able to manage them within the community for probably about $8,000 per person. And I think Julie, Julie may have some updated statistics on that. But it, it, as a whole, significantly reduces the cost to the criminal justice system. And importantly, I think, you know, it helps people get off drugs and, and lead more productive lives, which is better for all of us. So how does the, how does the drug court work? Well, the drug court, it's a multidisciplinary team approach, meaning that unlike traditionally in the criminal justice system, it's an adversarial approach, where the prosecutors are asking for one thing, and the defense attorneys are asking for something else, and the judge makes the decision about the person's fate. Once someone is pled into drug court, first of all, they have to be appropriate. They go through two screening processes. We only take participants who are high need for drug treatment, and who are high risk to reoffend, meaning they're going to, there's a good chance, if they don't do treatment, they're going to be released from incarceration and commit new crimes. Then, once they do that, there's a whole team that supports that person throughout the drug court. The team's made up of counselors, made up of Judge Colburn, who's one of the superior court judges in Nashua. There are police officers who are involved in the team from Nashua. There are two officers now who are on the team, working with the team from Merrimack. There's also Hollis and Hudson Police Officers. There's a prosecutor, a couple prosecutors on the team, defense attorney on the team. And what happens is that each week, the participants have a number of things that they are required to do. Go to treatment, go to work, go to meetings. They're drug tested regularly, but randomly, so they never know when their next drug test is going to come. And so, once a week, the team will get together and talk about how the folks did each week. And they'll get a report from, from the case managers in the probation department, I'm sorry, the probation department's also on the multidisciplinary team, about how that person did. And if they did... And if they did well, then during the court session that week, the judge will praise them, might give them a little token of appreciation, or an incentive for their good behavior. If they didn't do well, then they're, they don't get that incentive, and they get sanctions. And the sanctions can be anything from, you know, having to write an essay, to going to jail for a portion of the next week, up to, you know, termination in drug court, depending on how non-compliant they are. And, you know, it's interesting, I always invite people, the drug court meets every Tuesday afternoon in Nashua at...
Two o'clock or one o'clock?
One o'clock. It's a public session, so anyone's, anyone can come down and watch. And it really is interesting, for a number of reasons. You know, first, some of these folks who are in their twenties and thirties, you know, have been addicted to drugs since they were in their early teens. And so, this is the first time in their adult life that they're clean, and some, some public praise and a round of applause from their peers and the judge means a lot to them. Or the little, sometimes, they'll, they'll get small tokens like a gift card to Dunkin' Donuts or McDonald's, and that's, that's something, although I don't think they like to admit it all the time, you can tell that they appreciate it, and they appreciate being recognized for their hard work. And it does, you know, again, the studies show that this, this makes a difference, and the participation, the judicial participation on a weekly basis makes a, makes a difference. It's a much different interaction for the participants than they have always had with the criminal justice system. It's a different interaction with them for, and that's, you know, why it's so important, I think, for the police departments to be involved, and why it's, I think it's great for the town of Merrimack to be devoting some resources to it. The police officers get to know the participants, but the participants also get to know the police officers, and they get to build some trust there within the community. And it's a good, it's a, it's just, it's good for both sides of the relationship, because, first of all, these folks have a lot of information that, that may not otherwise be available to the police, and with building trust, the police might, may get a little bit more of that information. But also, you know, it allows the participants to see that the police aren't there just to, just to get them and put them back in jail, which is, which is good. So, there's also other ancillary services, case management, mental health treatment. And we talk about case management, again, you know, the team, treatment team does a lot with getting people appropriate housing, making sure that if they're going for a job interview, they know how to dress appropriately and what to, what to say, and, you know, how to put themselves in the best position to get that job. We've also been very fortunate to get a number of scholarships from the Nashville Community College, so that participants in the drug court, if they have their GED, if they have their high school diploma but need a little help in finishing up or taking some college classes, you know, they're able to do so, free of charge. And that's something that's been donated by the community college. There have been a number of people who have taken advantage of that, that program. I know that one person has graduated with their associate's degree, and another person from the program would have graduated with her associate's degree, but had, got pregnant and wasn't able to do so, but I think she's hoping to go back and finish that. So, there really are a lot of services that we can offer to put people in a good position. The other thing I'll say is that, you know, one of the most difficult things for me as a prosecutor was always to monitor compliance with restitution. When someone is, has to pay back a certain amount of money, and sometimes it can be thousands of dollars, you know, generally what happens is that they're sent to the state, the state has a collections person, and they're the ones who try to put the person on a payment plan for twenty-five dollars a month, whatever they can afford, and it would take them forever to pay the restitution back. And unfortunately, the victim doesn't get paid back until the defendant pays restitution through the state. You know, part of drug court is that if you are, if you have an outstanding restitution order, they're working with you to pay down that restitution before you get done drug court. They're working, you pay off any fines, if you need help getting your license back, they'll work with you to pay down the fines, and, you know, learn to be responsible and self-sufficient. So, it's really, these are things that the probation department is not necessarily always able to do because of their high caseloads, but the drug court team, because we have some more resources, can, can, can do that for these folks and really work with these folks. So, our results just from two thousand, about two thousand and fourteen, we've had about a hundred, we've had a hundred and fifteen participants come through the program, sixty-six percent male, thirty-four percent female, thirty-eight have graduated the program, you know, to the same, at the same levels as male and females, the participation rate. Eighty-nine percent of the graduates are employed at graduation. Some of the folks, some of the folks are not able to work because they are on stability, but still, you know, the folks who are getting through the program are, you know, self-sufficient, they're paying their own rents at the end of this, they're, we're making sure that if they have child support payments, they're making the child support payments. And then forty-four percent of graduates participated in educational or vocational activities, either class at the community college or other vocational training. We have had, there have been some people who have not made it through the program. There have been twenty-one terminations over the couple of years that the program has been in, in existence. And, you know, unfortunately, the realities of the heroin crisis now, you know, people are only as safe as their next use. And so, we have had, there have been seven participants who have overdosed and died while they were in the program, which is, you know, I know some of the participants had been doing, had been doing well, and then unfortunately, had a slip-up, and that was enough to have them overdose. So, it is sad, but it does happen. There have been, or there are currently three Merrimack residents who are in the drug court program. There have been eight altogether who have come through. And so, the young woman who had the mugshot at the beginning of the photo, this is her at her graduation, at the beginning of the presentation, is her, her graduation. A lot of, a lot of places say that drug courts are family courts, because they have the effect of reuniting families, whether it's participants with their children, or children building, building trust, again, with their parents that they lost while they were using. So, it has had a good effect. There are fifty participants right now in the program. I know that the program's hoping to expand to seventy-five participants. In Manchester, I know the drug court is around a hundred people, which, in my opinion, is probably where the Nashua drug court should be, if there was enough treatment team members and probation officers, to, to be able to actually help all the people. So, what, what we're hoping to do, other than expand, is to strengthen gender-specific treatment to better serve female patients. Right now, the groups that are held are, are both men and women together, but the studies show, and other counties are able to do male, male programming and female programming, and that helps probably both men and women in their group setting, talk about some of the issues that are specific to them. Revive Recovery is also a agency in, on Main Street in Nashua, which is helpful, part of the recovery community. We want to partner with them to better connect participants to recovery coaches, and that's for after they get out of drug court. Recovery coaches are basically like mentors, maybe you would think of them as sponsors, but not, not exactly like an AA sponsor. But they would be someone out in the community that participants can reach out to after they get through drug court, in case they have any other issues or need additional support in the community. And then, as we said, you know, drug court is a, is a, is a database program, and so, we are doing ongoing evaluations of outcome, to include recidivism at the three-year and five-year mark for participants after they have gone through the program. We haven't really been along, along, we haven't been established long enough yet in order to get those outcomes, but hopefully, as the program grows, we'll be able to see, really see how we're doing. Most successful drug courts nationally, the participation or successful completion rate is around fifty percent, and I believe that the Hillsborough South Drug Court is, is a little higher than that. And so, I think, as compared to other places, we're doing very well, because Judge Colburn and the team, you know, really adhere to the standards that have been set by the national drug court model. So, that's our presentation. We appreciate your time, and either myself or Julie Christensen-Collum would be happy to answer any questions.
I'm thrilled that, that we've been doing this in New Hampshire. I just found out within the past year that it had been going on, and I've always believed, even beyond, you know, folks having difficulty with drugs, that prison should be rehabilitative anyhow, and it, it has never been, so I'm, I'm happy to hear it. Bill?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and David, thank you for your presentation to everybody else, and thank you for the work that you do. I'm sure that there are days that it's difficult, and then it's days when you have the picture of the woman with her child, you know, those are, those are the days that put a smile on everybody's face, so I'm sure, those are, hopefully, they'll be more than few and far between down the road. One of the things I had written down in the context of your conversation was peer recovery, and I'm really happy to hear you talk about recovery coaches. I think it's easy to get, to get somebody with addiction issues into treatment, it's very easy to have them get out and be clean and sober for, for a day, three days, five days. I think having a recovery coach with them, to mentor them through the things that they need to do, so that they can integrate themselves back into society, to being a productive member, I think, is going to be vital and to harm in terms of how the drug court could potentially be successful here in Hillsborough County. I can't even begin to stress it. When I worked at Harbor Homes, I worked on the Peer Recovery Support Services team, and that's one of the things that, that I had learned in my, in my brief time there, that, you know, a lot of the work that's done on the front end needs to have that backend support, and I think without that backend support, people seem to get, get lost in translation. So, I really hope, as you, as the drug court moves forward, that there's, there's a commitment to incorporating the services that Revive Recovery provides, because I really think, I, I think that's a critical piece to this whole puzzle, I really do. The other, the couple of questions that I had, said you alluded to the defense attorneys being a part of the, of the process, so my question was, is the public defender's office involved? Are we including DCYF as a part of identifying appropriate participants into the drug court program?
So, the public defender's office is involved, they have two attorneys who sit on the team each week, along with the two prosecutors. I don't believe DCYF isn't part of the team, but I know that they will work with probation if there's information needed, specifically around issues. I don't know if there, is anyone in the drug court, well, I'm sure there are people who are going through maybe abuse and neglect proceedings, along with the criminal issues that they're having. And so, the information is, is shared, and it has to be shared, I mean, it's shared with the, with the counselors and probation officer, so therefore, shared with the whole team. But I, because of the way the drug court model, for someone to be involved in drug court, you have to have committed a crime and have been convicted of it, so DCYF does not make referrals into the drug court, because of, they, they may deal with people who aren't in the criminal justice system.
Okay.
And the other part I'll say about Revive Recovery is that I think one of the things that the drug court team is learning as it, as it, as cycle through and graduated a number of people, is that we, that they do need to strengthen the after-care services after people get through the program. And so, I know there is a commitment to working with Revive Recovery, a number of, the city of Nashua devoted some money to Revive Recovery, so that they could hire someone essentially to train recovery coaches, and I think the hope is that some of the drug court participants will train to be those recovery, you know, recovery coaches, not just for drug court participants, but for all the people.
No, that's, that's the key, is to have somebody that eventually goes through the program, and once they hit that, that year milestone, that three-year milestone, then obviously, it lends them, as a recovery coach, gives them a little bit more gravitas with, with, with a participant that's going through the program, because they have somebody to look to, they have somebody to identify with. And I really, I mean, you and I could do it, but, you know, are we really getting through to that individual? No, you need somebody that's, that's walked the steps before, it's the only way that's gonna work. The last question I have is, is I know that there was, there was some, a report at the Hillsborough County level, where the county attorney went to the county commissioner's office looking for additional funding for public defenders as it relates to the Felony First program. I'm not gonna talk about that. However, the Felonies First program, has there been, do you see any challenges or impacts as it relates to Felonies First in terms of identifying offenders that are going through the regular courts, and being, being targeted for this, specifically for the adult drug court?
So, in theory, Felonies First should help drug court, because one of the things that they say, one of the best practices, is that if you identify someone and get them into treatment immediately, or as soon as possible, that puts them on a better, better footing for the long term. I think, you know, I think eventually that will happen, especially once the drug court expands and gets a little bigger. I think currently, though, the drug court has struggled just with having enough space. You know, we have, there are plenty of people, and if they could, they would take as many, as many participants as they, as they could, but it's difficult in, you know, they only have so much capacity with the staffing that they have. So, I'm not sure that, that answers your question.
No, I, no, I, I got your point. I appreciate you answered my question, so I appreciate it. So, thanks for the work that everybody does, and thank you for coming to Merrimack to present.
Sure.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Bill. Peter?
Dave, thank you for your presentation as well. Juveniles, do you guys include juveniles at all, is that a separate system in the juvenile justice system?
So, that, it's a separate system, and so, we don't include juveniles, but there are other places that have juvenile drug courts. Another important part of our drug court, the way we have it set up, as I, as I mentioned before, we deal with high-risk high-need people. A lot of times, you know, parents will, will come in and say, listen, my, my, my adult son or daughter needs drug court, they're starting down the wrong path that they've used for a long time. But what the research shows is that if you put someone who's not high-risk high-need, so if they're only a moderate risk to reoffend, or have a moderate drug problem, then instead of the low-level people helping the high-level people, the high, people who are high-risk to reoffend, will drag the other people, the moderate risk, down with them. So, we are, the drug court is careful to pick, pick the right people. There are other places that have tiers for, for various level of offenders. Some courts in some states have, you know, drug courts that are just set up for people who have issues with alcohol, or driving after, driving while intoxicated issues. But we're, we're not there quite yet in New Hampshire.
Okay, just, and to continue on that, is there a representative on your committee from the Department of Corrections?
I'm sorry, yes, there is. It's Captain Scurry is, is on the team. And so, they're, they're part of the team as well, which is, again, important for information sharing, it helps facilitate, you know...
Yeah, those guys are seeing a lot in the jails and stuff, so, yeah, thank God to hear that. Okay. Now, you indicated that there were, I guess there's, you had fifty, fifteen graduations this past year?
With, altogether...
Oh, thirty-eight graduations, I thought. Or was that for...
Yeah, thirty-eight graduates, thirty-eight graduates.
Is there a recidivism rate on those folks?
That's a good question. I know some of them have, some of them have been arrested again. I don't know, Julie, Julie would know more about that.
Hi, thank you for having us. So, anecdotally, I do know that there have been some people that have been rearrested. In large part, they were for technical violations of probation, because people do remain on probation for a time after the completion of drug court. We did have someone that has returned to drug court for a second go, extremely successful the first time, and had some, had some trouble afterward. But we are being evaluated right now, and we are gonna be looking at the actual recidivism rates over time. I think I put three and five years on the slide, but I think it's actually one in three years. So, as we, we need a little more help. So as we, we need a little more help, technical help to do that, but that's one of the things we're going to really be looking at, is the recidivism rate.
Okay, thank you. And I guess, Dave, and I'm sorry to take over the mic here, just a few questions that have been on my mind when I saw this presentation. What is the drug offenses as a percentage of the cases the entire Hillsborough County Attorney's Office handles? What would be the percentage of drug cases, as opposed to the other crimes?
So, so if you're talking, I don't know specifically off the top, you know, the specific number. Anecdotally, I would think it would be extremely high, especially if you lump in all the cases that are, of the crimes that are committed because of drug addiction. So you might have a theft or a burglary, which is motivated by a drug addiction. But, but, I mean, it is the, it's the highest percentage of class of cases that the county Attorney's Office handles. They handle even more of them now after the felonies first, because all the felony drug crimes go to them, any possession, any sales, things like that. But, you know, I would say it's probably around 80 percent of the cases. That could, that could be high, but for anyone in the system, it doesn't, doesn't feel like that.
Okay. And I guess Hillsborough North is their own separate organization?
It's all in the Hillsborough County Attorney's Office, but they have their own separate office, separate prosecutors.
Okay. And one thing that's kind of come across my radar over the past year is the issue of bail. And I guess I'm trying to figure out, now, is there, are cases looked at if you get an individual that's actually dealing, as opposed to individual who's using? I mean, is there a difference in how bail is handled with these individuals and so forth?
Yes, there is. And it depends on so many factors, right? I mean, someone could have a possession, but it could be their fifth possession that month. And, you know, so the judge is concerned about their own safety, so he may hold them, he or she may hold them on bail. So there's no, there's no fixed formula for it, but it's pretty, and I think the prosecutors have adapted as well. They're not asking for, for high bail on someone who it's not appropriate for. So it's tough to say exactly. I know that at the state level, there's been talk about bail reform. I'm not exactly sure what that means. But, you know, again, from, I mean, I think if you went and asked Valley Street what their numbers pre-trial looked like now versus what they did five or 10 years ago, it'd probably be drastically different.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Thanks, Peter. Tom?
Thanks. I'm just curious, you talked about 80 percent of the people in the system, 80 percent of the offenders are drug and alcohol abusers, and you just mentioned that potentially 80 percent of the cases are drug-related, one way or another. As a percentage of the cases, how many cases is the drug court dealing with?
You know, with only 50 participants, a very, very small number.
That's what I, yeah.
And the other, I mean, so some of the other cases can be dealt with through other ways. You know, some, some people can be trusted to go out and do treatment on their own and report back to the prosecutor in the court. Some people are put on probation, and the probation officer will monitor them in the community. And then, you know, other people, because of their histories, are, you know, sentenced to longer sentences and sent to the state prison and are on parole when they are released. So it's, it's still a small, a small percentage of the cases that come through the system. But, you know, since we're only dealing with the, with the most high-need folks, that's, like I said, there's, there could be more people in drug court, but, you know, not everybody in the system is high-need, so it probably almost adequately deals with the folks that it needs to deal with.
And what's keeping you from expanding at this point? Is it just money? Is it people or?
It's money, it's money for staff. If we had, you know, I think there are two clinicians on the team now and two case managers.
Two and a half clinicians, although hiring is also an issue. Trying to qualify.
Julie did come up.
I'm sorry, yeah, if you don't mind.
Sorry. Yep, so we have, we have 2.5 FTE therapists on the staff right now. It is difficult when somebody leaves to hire right now. There's finding qualified substance abuse counselors is difficult. And then we have two case managers, and then myself is the coordinator. And then all the other team members contribute their time essentially without getting paid through the drug court. It's, you know, something that they do in addition to their regular job responsibilities. So I think in large part, it is around, it's around staffing. And also, you know, wanting to grow in a healthy way and being able to serve the people we can, and then kind of expanding further.
Okay. But the steering committee is volunteer, and you have this small handful of staff that actually works with these 50 people at this point? So you need to expand that just to get up to 75, right?
We think we can get to 75 with the staff that we have, but we have to do it a little bit slowly.
Yeah, you don't want to burn everybody out and lose them, right? I think that was the question. Oh, you mentioned the gender ratio and wanting to even it out or something. If you were to guess at the ratio of people in the court system that are drug-related, is it offset from the 60/40 or 65/35 or?
I don't, I mean, the system tends to be more, more male than female, certainly. I think there's been some leveling out of that with the, with the drug epidemic. But I think, you know, really, in, I think what you see is a lot of, a lot of the folks who come in either with drug issues or come through the, come through the drug court, is that there's, a lot of them have some, some trauma history. And I think that the gender-specific groups probably help to, help them be a little more open about that in the clinical setting.
Yeah, I understand that. I just hate to see anybody get turned away because they don't meet some quota for gender or something like that. And yet, I wonder if we're trying to get to 50/50?
I don't think you said.
With a slant or not, or to any particular number?
I don't think they've said that, though. I think, I think you wanted to have more appropriate programs so we could have women separated. Maybe you did say that, I didn't, I didn't hear that, though.
No, I think that's what the goal, I don't, I don't think the goal is to be 50/50.
Well, I don't know what it is, but I thought I heard you say you wanted to balance or change the ratio from what it is right now.
If I did, I must have misspoke. I mean, I think we.
I couldn't read the slides, so I was.
But I think, you know, and I think we ought to offer the best treatment available for, for the folks. Actually, one of the, we started off under grants from the federal government, and so one of the big factors for the grants was that we weren't discriminating against anybody based on race, gender, ethnicity. So I think we're cognizant of that, and there have been steps taken to try to look, I mean, I don't think gender has ever been an issue that we've looked at to say, we need more women or less women or more men.
Just that if you had a larger crowd, you could have specific courses, classes, or whatever, for the individual genders?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Could I just add something about the recovery coaching? Is that a?
Yes, sure.
Great. So I just, I just want to, you know, kind of echo what you said. I think what we've learned from experience is that, you know, people can get through treatment and with the, especially with the supervision that they get, you know, they can, they can do quite well, but they really have to have the support in the community for when they leave to kind of continue to maintain and grow and, you know, deal with issues that come up. And so we're really excited about partnering with Revive and Recovery Coaches, and we think it's going to add a lot to, to the program, but especially, I think, I think it's really going to help when people graduate, and it will, I think, help improve our recidivism rate tremendously, so.
Yeah, great. Peter?
When you guys have a, have a client go to, or defendant go to the Farnham Center or some type of inpatient rehabilitation, where does the funding come from for that?
So insurance would pay for it, or the Farnham Center or certain programs get money from the state to serve people without insurance, so that's where it comes from.
I can imagine, yeah, I can imagine a lot of these folks don't have insurance.
We work really hard with people to get them insurance, and they're, they're required to have insurance if it's available to them, so we work really hard to make sure people keep it.
Nancy?
I was going to, I think you, thank you. That's going to be a jab from them. It was easier to remember over there. I think you addressed it, though. I was wondering whether you have or plan to partnership with Community Resources already support groups, because I think you're right. I mean, it sounds as if they get a substantial amount of support and guidance through the court program, but it's the after. To maintain the sobriety, you have to be able to have that additional support group, and having it introduced while they were there rather than stopping and starting. And I'm wondering if you're already doing that, or that's part of your future plans?
So one of the things that we do with every participant who's coming through the program, you know, that, you know, we kind of work treatment to get them stabilized, and then really help them think about, well, what is your plan for recovery and what's going to work for you? We really encourage, you know, and mandate, to a certain extent, people to try out, you know, recovery groups in the community. It's not for everybody, but, you know, if people can get exposed to it, it's going to work for a lot of people. And we have had people that have become really connected and really credit those to their ability to maintain their recovery. And, you know, we've had, we've had some really successful graduates, too. We have had some who've reoffended, but we've also had some people be really successful, like Dave spoke about, the participant who just graduated from Nashville Community College this month with a degree, so.
But even with the reoffending, you know, every, I suppose it depends upon the severity of the reoffends, too.
Right.
That you can fall off the wagon and get back on, but it depends upon the severity of it, I would like to think. Is that one of those circumstances where they will be not allowed to come back, or if they reoffended?
Um, no.
More complexity, I suppose.
Yeah, I mean, you're right. It depends on, you know, what.
What it was.
What it was, and, you know, what the prosecutor, you know, would be recommending. We have had someone return after, you know, serving a, I don't know if it's a brief or a long jail sentence, but I wouldn't call it very long, you know, it's kind of a punishment, and then returning to try it again.
Okay. Well, I wish you luck, and thank you for your attempts.
Thanks.
To support them.
Just a quick question. You had mentioned that you had 21 people who had terminated from the program. What are the, what's the basis, or what are the criteria used to terminate a person from the program?
So basically, you know, we'll say serial non-compliance is what, what the judge looks for. And the treatment team will talk about whether the person is really making an effort. I know that the team has had people who are not using drugs anymore, they've gotten clean, but they just refuse to follow the rules in their, you know, they're given chance after chance after chance, and the team has just thought that they're, you know, not going to be successful. So it's really, it's really, you know, certainly if they commit new crimes, some people abscond from the program, don't come for months at a time, and so something like that would probably lead to a termination.
Yeah, I think typically, just broadly speaking, you know, what we would be considering is, the program relies very heavily on behavioral modification, and we use both the sanctions and the incentives. And so if the incentives aren't working and the sanctions aren't working, then it's probably not the program for them if they can't be maintained safely in the community. You know, like Dave was speaking about, then, then they would face termination, which means that their sentence would be imposed and they would end up in prison.
Thank you.
Okay. Anything further? No?
Dave, and I'm, I'll leave it at this. Now, you folks are here, this is basically a public service message, is that why you're here in front of us today?
It is, and we've presented at the Board of Alderman in Nashville. I think we're hoping to present in Hudson and just come out and let everyone know what we're doing. And if anyone has questions or would like to come to a drug court session, you know, please feel free to do so.
And I think, and I appreciate that, and I think it's a good idea that you're going around. I think that there's a lot that people don't know about the drug court or understand. And I think that there's a lot of frustration out there with the whole opioid epidemic itself, and I'm glad you guys are doing this. And I think, one, maybe even reach out further to the general public, but also law enforcement. I think there is a lot of law enforcement out there that are working hard, that I don't think maybe they, they, they're, have a full understanding of it. And I'm not saying a majority, but I'm thinking there's some folks out there that could use some further education on what this is about as well.
Well, and I think, you know, the departments who are involved in the drug court or with the drug court team clearly see its value because it is, you know, you're devoting an officer who could be, you know, either on the street or investigating other crimes. You're giving some hours to the drug court team every week, and, but I think the ones who are involved really see the benefit, benefit to it. And it is an educational process, so.
And I, just a caveat, I don't, I don't feel that's Merrimack PD in any way, but I've spoken to a lot of people in law enforcement, so, and I get that feeling sometimes from some of them, that they don't have an understanding of what you folks are doing.
And I don't think it's, you know, a lot of the folks who are in the program, most of them get to a point where they say, well, this is too hard, I'd rather just do my time at state prison, because they've done it before. So I think that, you know, if officers can see, you know, that the treatment team people are really holding people accountable, you know, they would, they would have a different, and I don't think that's Merrimack PD in the least, but.
I just wanted to add, I think from, you know, the perspective of a drug court team member, it's so important and so helpful to have the police on our team, because they're out in the community kind of telling us what's happening and what they're seeing, and, you know, we, you know, we saw so-and-so hanging over, you know, at so-and-so's place, and it's probably not the safest place for them to be, and then we can address it in treatment. So it's really beneficial to us.
Excellent. All right. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you, thanks for your time.
Peter? I think it might be in. Oh, it's not. Who said that?
Hey, you make me the water boy.
I know his barber. All right. Sorry about that.
I was going to say, Tom and Pete have had a really short new council, kind of. In fact, you got away with everything.
What? Look, your button's still on.
All right, next on the agenda under appointments is Fourth of July review. And here to speak with us this evening is Neil Anketell, the event coordinator, and Ed Hilston, the Rotary Club president. And they're here to discuss the plans and the intentions of the Rotary Club regarding the coordination and implementation of a safe and fun Independence Day celebration. Oh, and Bob Best is here as well. His name wasn't on my list, I apologize.
Hi, good evening.
Good evening.
All right, thank you for taking the time to let us address the council. We're happy to be here and tell you a little bit about our role with the Independence Day celebration for the town of Merrimack. My name is Neil Anketell, for record. And I am the chairman of the committee that coordinates the event. I oversee the different aspects that it takes to put on the event, to make it safe and fun for everybody. And I have here Ed Hilston, the president of the Rotary Club of Merrimack, who is, also takes the lead role with the entertainment efforts for the Fourth of July. And he'll be, he'll be talking about that in just a second. Let's see. We, this year, we're, we pretty much are going to go ahead and proceed in the same fashion that we did last year. The layout, the entertainment, well, the amount of entertainment we had worked really well to fill the whole day and have somebody on the stage, on the main stage, all day. We, we expect to have the same amount of vendors that we did last year and kind of keep it to the same, again, the same layout and pretty close to the same amount of vendors. We're looking probably somewhere towards about 40 vendors, including the entertainment and some of the others. So, that's pretty good. We, as always, we do have a lot of bounce houses and activities for the children. We have arts and crafts tents set up for them as well. We do a chalk art for them over by the food tent. And there's a chalk art contest that they can be involved with if they choose to. The other activities that we have is, we do have entertainment, like I said, on our main stage. And I'd like Ed to just speak about that, if you would.
Sure.
Yeah.
Thank you. Again, my name's Ed Hilston, current president of the Rotary Club. For the entertainment this year, we have a clown for the kids, a magician clown that comes every year, and she'll be back again. And we have the Blues Brothers Band coming in, and they're gonna be in the parade itself, but after the parade, they're gonna come in and entertain onstage after our opening ceremonies. We're gonna have a young vocalist. She's gonna come in and sing with the band. We're gonna have Pistol Pete and the Smoking Guns. They're a blues-based band as well, more rhythm and blues style. And we're gonna have Studio Two come in, and they're a Beatles cover band, which we've had years before. So, they're gonna be our headliners for the evening. So, we'll also have during that, the police department comes in with Dallas and does a dog demonstration, as well as the fire department coming in and doing a recovery demonstration for us. And the public seems to really enjoy both of those events. Over at the high school, we're gonna have Darren Roy over there doing, he's a DJ. He has some entertainment, both live and recording. And he's also running a cornhole contest over at the high school just prior to the fireworks. So, it's for people that are gathering down that end of the area. So, that's pretty much it for the entertainment side. But I also just wanted to interject that it's been a real pleasure to work with the whole town with these events year upon year. The school system, the fire department, the police department, Parks and Recs, Public Works, they've all been great in supporting this event throughout the years, both with the pancake breakfast and with the family fun afternoon session of it. It's been a pleasure to work with all of them. They really have done everything that we've asked of them to help support this. So, just wanted to put that out there, and thank you very much for allowing us to address you today.
We appreciate all you do, all this time, so. Tom.
A quick question. So, do you guys post, like, the entertainment, like, who's gonna be entertaining, like, the different bands? Because you might have followers and stuff and get more.
Yeah, we do. We have a website, merrimackfourth.com. It's, puts the schedule out there as close as we can, keeping to the schedule. Of course, those things get shifted during the day as need be. But yes, it is, there's links to the bands on the website. And the bands themselves quite frequently have their own fan base that come to town as part of that as well.
Paul.
Ed, Neil, is this rain or shine?
It is. The midway, if you will, is rain or shine. It's hard to get the vendors and the entertainment to book a second date if we did have rain. So, it is a rain or shine event, as well as, I believe, it was said to me today is that the parade as well as the rain or shine event. The only thing that may be different would be the fireworks, and that would be dependent on the company that does it, yeah. So, it is a rain or shine event. The event starts at 12 o'clock, following the pancake breakfast that Rotary puts on. And that, the pancake breakfast is from 8 o'clock to 11:00. And you can come down to the high school cafeteria and enjoy a nice breakfast put on for Rotary as a way to raise some funds. You know, that goes right back to the community. I'd like to piggyback what he had said about the, how much of it, it is an honor to have this, to be able to put this event on and to help coordinate it. It's obviously not just me. We have a tremendous amount of people that come out to help support this, not only with sponsorships to help fund the event, but also volunteer efforts. We have a couple hundred people, I would imagine, throughout the few days it takes to set this thing up and take it down. And to be able to work with the people in the community is really amazing, and you get to meet your neighbors. And you get to meet a lot of the organizations in town that really step up. And it's so community-based and family-oriented that it's a great pleasure to be a part of it and to have the opportunity to do this. Any other questions that you may have? I'd be happy to answer. I feel like, what I would, Bob, would you like to add anything about the volunteers or any of the organizations that help us out on that? Bob is, Bob has led the efforts in the volunteers, obtaining volunteers, and you should just speak on that for a second.
So, in years past, I've led the effort with the volunteers, but that's getting handed off this year to another person. So, I can tell you a little bit about where we've gotten our help from in the past, and we're always looking for more help, and I can put everybody in touch. But Jen Kaludi, who is Sal Kaludi's wife, who is a, Sal's a Rotarian, she's jumping in and helping with the volunteers, and we can put you in touch with her. But all organizations that give us some volunteer time, the Rotary Club returns with a donation based on some of the funds that are raised out in the field. So, it's an opportunity for people to not only help us out, we turn around and help them right back. And we need tons and tons of help. Separate, I wanna switch gears. Why I'm not doing volunteers is I'm gonna focus on the pancake breakfast. That's gonna be my little project this year. And I'm looking at all, I think every one of you guys have the right skill set for making pancakes. I think all of you guys can handle this job. If not, we got some training. We could probably teach you up if you need to. So, I'll be sending each of you some emails and see if we can't get you over there for an hour or two. So, that's all I've gotta add.
Thank you. Thanks, Paul.
So, that's pretty much it. Like I said, we're gonna kind of, we're gonna kind of do what we did last year, because if it's not broke, don't fix it. What we do hope to do is just expand our vendor presence and continue to just give out really great entertainment. Ed does a tremendous job procuring the entertainment for the day, and we have some pretty big names, you know. And we're really excited about that. And like I said, with the other entertainment, with the way that the town's coming together to give us the demonstrations that, you know, from the police and fire department, it's really, it draws a big crowd. A lot of people really like to see that, so we're grateful to have that in our pocket, you know. And with that, I think that's pretty much like, you know, the gist of it, what we're gonna be doing. And if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them. No? Well.
Peter.
I didn't know. Is there a motion involved with this?
No, we're just here to share our thoughts and, you know, ideas about it and let you know what we plan on doing, how we wanna represent the Independence Day celebration for the town.
Wonderful.
All right.
And this program runs effectively, at least the midway, if you will, from 12 to 9:00?
It is, yeah, 12 o'clock.
Things going on the whole time, and people are showing up and leaving and coming back and things of that nature?
We do, yeah. So, the vendors will be there and all set up at 12 o'clock. We will have some music playing, you know, some pre-recorded stuff during the first hour or so. The opening ceremony will be about 2:00. That follows after the-
After the parade?
Yeah, immediately after the parade, we have our opening ceremonies. And so, yeah, the event from that point on is in full force, and we have entertainment throughout the day, live entertainment and the other things like Ed had mentioned. And it'll go to 9:00, and that's when the fireworks will start, and that's when we can all relax.
Until next year.
Do you have anything special set up for parking or transportation or anything of that nature?
So, we don't have anything set up for transportation necessarily, but we do have designated areas to accommodate limited access, you know, handicap parking. We also do designate some areas specifically for the entertainment and whatnot, because it makes it easier, obviously, for them to get in and out, and it doesn't cause too much traffic. But there is plenty of parking down by the high school, I find, and there's also some parking across from the midway by the tennis courts and whatnot.
It used to be a tennis court. Where it used to be.
A former, it's a grass lot now.
A grass lot.
It is. It is. Yeah, well, thank you again for your time, and we hope to see you guys down there.
Take care. Thanks very much.
Thank you.
The third item on the under appointments is New Hampshire Hot Dogs. It's the Third Annual Hot Dog Sale to Benefit Alzheimer's Association. And Robert Bergen is here. How are you, Bob?
Hello, Bob.
I'm here. My event coordinator, he's got the light, is going to give you, once you go have a handle, you're done.
Well, they're coming.
Make sure, Bob, if you will, that that mic is on, that that light is bright. And if it doesn't look bright, hit that button. Yep? No, I've been told you have to pick, you have to pick the mic up then, because he can't pick you up in the back. Oh, it's not on?
There you go.
That button. It was on. 66 seconds I did for a reason. Because in New Hampshire, every 65 seconds, someone hears a word. It's a dirty word. It's an ugly word, but it doesn't go away. The word is dementia. Unfortunately, it's the sixth leading cause of death in New Hampshire. 24,000 people in our state have it. We're very fortunate in Merrimack that for 25 years in South Merrimack, there has been a day away program addressing awareness and providing a respite program for people of our community. But there's not enough room and there's not enough awareness. You have a little brochure in your hand. Nancy, I commend you. I believe you are the only person in three years who has eaten a hot dog-
Every year.
-at our event. That's right. McCauley came once, and I'm daring him to come back, because I will burn all my Yankee cards if he doesn't. The critical issue is, there are people in our community who are living with this disease, and they're living with it alone. 35% of the people who have this disease live alone. They don't have any caregivers. They don't have any volunteers. Our goal, and this is our third year, with the assistance of the Catholic Church and the Knights of Columbus, is to provide a day of awareness from 11:00 to 7:00. American apple pie, potato chips, and a cold drink. Five bucks. Most people come and donate more. The chief just left. She works as a cashier. The fire chief works as a cashier. Last year, between the police and the fire department, they ate over 100 hot dogs. They came. They participated. It's that simple. I need something from you, and it's not your $5. I want you to do something that only five towns in New Hampshire have done, and no towns, excuse me, five towns in Massachusetts have done, and no towns in New Hampshire. And that is, I want you to join myself and my team, Warren and Ginny and Clay and Sylvia and the other 30 volunteers, doing something on June 21st, which is the national day assigned to be the longest day. I want you to declare Merrimack will go purple. It's gonna cost you nothing. Purple on trees, purple on your mailbox, purple everywhere. Purple ribbon, purple bow, purple flowers, purple balloons. A statement, because it costs nothing to tell those people who are living alone with the disease that their neighbor notices them. Maybe there's a little something you can do. Maybe there's a little awareness that you can make that you weren't thinking about before. Maybe you can help them with an ATM machine. I have helped more people with their remote control devices, because that used to be their husband's job or their wife's job, and there's little things. When we put up tables and chairs in the alleyway between our Lydia Mercy Church and the rectory, they come, they sit, and they talk, and they chat, and they spend time with their neighbors, many of which they've never met before. So, we provide two things. We provide a hot dog, and we provide love for those people. If you can provide love by declaring Merrimack purple for one day, that's what I came for. I didn't come for any other reason. The towns in Massachusetts are Lexington, Concord, Plymouth, Waltham, and Watertown. But I happen to have evidence that says my team, and I have 30 members of my team, has accomplished more in three years than any other team in our state. There are two social workers for the Alzheimer's Association in New Hampshire, and they will be at our event in Merrimack with an information table. The only two that exist will be here. I have volunteers. I want to take it the next step. I want you to take it the next step. I know you can't do it now. Do it in your regular session or your new business, whatever you wanna do it under. Read the booklet. Adjust and learn a little more about a disease that isn't going away. And the reason this day is called the longest day is because it's a long disease. It's a painful disease. I get shaken up because I worked in the field as a caregiver, and it's a difficult thing for these families. We can make a statement in Merrimack. We can shake up the other towns and maybe make other people aware of the fact. It's not gonna take a lot to show a lot of purple and to show something. The Cancer Society people may not like us after that, because they also use purple. Everybody seems to be into purple this year or last year. But I need your help. I need you to talk about it among yourselves. I need you to make, Mr. Chairman, a declaration of purple. Merrimack goes purple on June 21st. And I promise, I'll do everything I can to make sure that it all gets picked up and that there won't be any craziness. We've had enormous contribution of sponsors. I have been privileged to go around the village and get a lot of good responses from a lot of people. I only have one day away program brochure to give the town manager. If you wanna make copies of this, actually, you don't have to do it. I'll get the Yankee fan to do it. You can make copies for the board. It is their 25th year, and I don't think a lot of people know about them. They have done a marvelous job in respite care, and I'm very, very proud of what they've accomplished. I can only hope that my team and what I'm doing might touch anywhere near the accomplishment they've already achieved. But if you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer it, if I can. I'm not medically knowledgeable, but I know a little bit about fundraising.
Peter.
Mr. Albert.
How you doing, Bob?
I'm here.
Thank you. Bob, do you guys stay in connection with St. Joseph Community Services Meals on Wheels? To hook up any people you might have in various communities that are alone?
No, I don't know. The Knights of Columbus does not. Bob Bergen does not. I am aware of Merrimack residents through my own church, but not through Meals on Wheels and not through an official organization.
And the reason I just bring it up is because it might be if there's somebody in the organization that wants to connect with the Hillsborough County Meals on Wheels, they're right here in town, their office. And, you know, that might be a way to, some of these folks that are alone and have issues going on, the health issues, might be a way to get them on board.
I guess I can say sure, but I don't, you know, I don't understand all of the mechanisms that have to be put into place for someone to become a client of Meals on Wheels.
Okay, you know what? I can reach out to you.
All right.
Thank you.
I got enough projects.
Thanks, Peter.
What are you laughing at, Thor?
Tom.
It's embarrassing when a former one of your players is on the board.
Because you are a busy man.
Don't worry. I won't show up with any photographs.
Bob, I appreciate you being here and especially promoting awareness of Alzheimer's. I guess I'm not sure exactly. I guess I'm not sure exactly... I heard what you said. Exactly how we're gonna affect the kinds of change or the kinds of things that you're looking for. Do you have, or do you know if the association has a template resolution that maybe we could use to go forward with, or do we have to generate our own, or...
Like I said, Melissa and Carrie... Carrie just gave a talk at the library like two weeks ago. Melissa is the head of the region. They have all of the connections and templates. If people wanted the information, they will be providing that at our event. I don't have... I don't work for them. I'm a volunteer, you know, and I...
But you're asking us to do something, and I'm wondering if you could help us to know what would be the appropriate thing to do.
The appropriate thing to do would be to simply just declare a day of purple for all survivors. It could be... I mean, it happens to be we're running an event that day. But I don't have, you know, a specific thing. In each of the villages, in Concord, they do a various amount of lemonade stands, and they have different businesses contributing different deals during the day. In Merrimack, two gas stations that I know of, Ready Fuel, are giving five cents off a gallon for every gallon purchased on June 21st, and they will be decorating their two gas stations with multiple purple. It's more of an awareness that I'm stretching for. I'm looking for the board to say they're aware of it. I will share with you, in fairness, Nancy's my only customer. You know...
I got a gold statue, Nick.
She got a...
Hot dog. Paul said he's coming this year.
And two years in a row, we are right there in the parking lot. And like I said, police and the fire department came. So, it's coming here tonight to...
A lot of it's awareness.
You know, you said it best. You said you didn't know about the event. And I said, "Oh, I didn't come to you. I didn't come to the mountain and ask the mountain to come. I didn't invite you personally, but you came. But you came a second year, but I guess you didn't tell them you were gonna go." So, I just need you to know.
You just lost your star.
Your presence means... And Barbara, I don't know you that well. Welcome to Merrimack or whoever. But I know all these other people. Your awareness, your stepping up, means something to the people who are living with dementia and living with the disease. And if you do it, it'll make a difference to them. So...
Well, like I was trying to say, I appreciate what you're doing and the effort you're going through. I've been in the... I've participated in the walk to fight Alzheimer's up in Manchester. My mother passed away with Alzheimer's, and so I'm well aware of the disease. I'm well aware of the Day Away Program at St. John Newman, and I think it has been a wonderful program, and I would love to see it expand and expand awareness of the whole situation, not only for the people suffering, but the people that are suffering from the other end of that as well. Because the loss of a loved one due to Alzheimer's is a terrible, terrible situation to be in. So, if there's anything I can do to help personally, please reach out to me.
Year in the nights, you can come cook hot dogs. Forget about the pancakes.
I got two cooking assignments. Anyway, thank you, Bob.
No, thank you.
Thank you very much, Bob.
That's it?
We appreciate it.
All right. Do the right thing, people. This town's gonna make a statement. I'll turn the microphone off.
Thanks for stopping by.
Thanks, Bob.
All right. Next item, fourth item under appointments is the Department of Revenue Administration update, changes to RSA 35:5, Capital Reserve Fund of Counties, Towns, Districts, and Water Departments. And here to speak to us about it is Paul McCauley. And I know we have a gentleman from the DRA, and I apologize because I didn't get your name.
Mr. Steve Hamilton.
Stephen Hamilton.
And you've been here before, have you not?
I have. You recognize me.
I did.
I don't know if that's good or bad, that you recognize...
He looks like a finance guy to me, so...
For those of you who I've not met, my name is Stephen Hamilton. I'm the Director of the Municipal and Property Division at DRA.
Bob, excuse me, Steve. Bob, you turned it off.
It is. Is it good? Are we good? Okay. And so, thank you, Mr. Chair and members of the council. I'm gonna try and be brief. Mr. McCauley and I had a conversation earlier this year regarding a change to the law that occurred in 2017 that related to appropriations to capital reserve funds. And Chapter 127 of the laws of 2017 changed the way... the pathways that appropriations may be made into those capital reserve funds. The law is clarified now that the only manner to add money into a capital reserve fund is through a special warrant article. The change impacted Merrimack in the historic manner that the capital reserve funds had been raised through the operating budget. And so, the town and DRA, when we became aware that this was an issue with the operating budget and that the capital reserve fund appropriation would need to be revised, we wanted to make sure that we did it in a way which was not panicky and didn't disrupt the process for this year, but wanted to come up with a plan to make that change for the ensuing year. Mr. McCauley and I spoke very shortly after. We both had come to the realization that this was not working the way that the law had changed to anticipate it. We came up together with three very simple steps to help make sure that there was good clarity with the way that the appropriations were made. The first was to... for the town to notify the trustees of the trust fund that certain amounts of money had been appropriated to capital reserve funds so that they could anticipate receiving that money in December of this year. The second was to invite me to have this brief meeting to notify you about the issue and make ourselves available as a resource to help you make the transition. And three, to make sure that the process is changed for the coming year. The process that's utilized in most towns is a relatively simple, single appropriation of a gross amount to multiple identified capital reserve funds. The appropriation needs to state the total amount and then call out the individual fund appropriations separately. I'd offer some caution on that. If there is an amendment by the meeting to the amount of money which is being appropriated, either up or down, the meeting would want to identify where in those funds the changes would be found. Other towns will go through and have individual articles for each of the capital reserve fund appropriations. That may not be efficient. In a town like Merrimack, where I think you have fifteen usually appropriations, that's probably not gonna be that great. But many towns have a combination of the two approaches, where they'll have the regular amounts that are appropriated on an annual basis to capital reserve funds in a single article. And then if there is an article which appropriates a special amount to a fund, which is unusual, then that can be called out as a separate warrant article. That way, if there's something of controversy or a large amount of money that you don't want to jeopardize the overall capital reserve fund appropriation, it can be taken up separately without risking the rest of the capital reserve fund. We have examples of sample language. I think that Mr. McCauley has some as well. We're ready to help in whatever way we can, and that was the basis of my coming here tonight, and I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you, Steve. Tom.
Thanks. I appreciate you being here. I guess I'm wondering if you could help us understand the intent of the legislation to change the wording this way. Is it strictly to call it out at this special meeting or at the ballot that these deposits are being made, as opposed to having them be part of the budget?
So, it's a great question. It seems like, you know, a minute detail. You know, why would it be a problem to have these funds included with the operating budget? But appropriations to capital reserve funds are special types of acts. And so, those dollars are not like the operating fund dollars. There's no ability to line-item transfer any of those funds which are appropriated in a special warrant article. And it's one of the few acts of the town meeting which is not optional upon the governing body. Once the town meeting votes to appropriate and raise that money and deposit it into a capital reserve fund, it must be done by a certain date set in the law. So, having those appropriations in an operating budget, it kind of mixes up two different kinds of dollars, and I think that's what the legislature was trying to make sure they were separated for.
Okay. So, you feel their intent was to clarify or to ensure that these monies were appropriated properly and nobody was trying to shift them somewhere else or move them into a fire department budget or something like that?
I've not seen any evidence that any town or municipality had done anything like that, but simply the concern that seemed to be expressed was that those two different types of money shouldn't be mixed in one article.
Okay. And if I might... Special warrant articles, is there something special about them besides the word "special" that causes these to be special warrant articles? Or can you help me to understand? I mean, I have a little piece of the RSA here in the backup material which defines where we might use them, but it doesn't define... Let me get to my question. You asked... You suggested that it was possible that they could be changed at the deliberative session.
They may be.
Is there nothing about a special warrant article that prohibits that, or...
No, there's nothing that prohibits that. In fact, special warrant article is a category of warrant article that includes, among other things, an article by petition. So, just the same way that a petition warrant article may be amended at the deliberative session, so can an appropriation to a capital reserve fund.
So, there's nothing particularly special about it, except it's considered a category and that's...
And the word "special" is the word that the legislature used to describe it.
Specifically.
Yeah, they could have chosen a...
Okay. So, it goes to that and that only, and that's part of what they're driving at, is to make sure that those funds deposit to that account and that account only. And also, there's a comment in there about non-lapsing, and these obviously are non-lapsing. They go from year to year, which is part of what you were talking about, the difference in the types of money in the budget.
Correct. For only under very limited circumstances would budget money not lapse at the end of the fiscal period.
Okay. Thank you for your assistance. I help it. I appreciate it.
Nancy?
Oh, see, I remember this time. I just want to make sure I understand. So, this involves when money is being put into capital reserves. What happens when you're expending money from capital reserves? Is that still in the operating budget, or does that have to be in a warrant?
So, that's really gonna depend on who has authority to expend the money in the capital reserve fund. Many of the funds will have an agency established, which you have. And so, therefore, there's no further action that's required to expend money which is expended by an agent of the fund.
Not even a public hearing? Public hearings not required?
No.
I don't believe there is. Once you... Once the legislative body, the town meeting, has appropriated the money into the capital reserve fund and named the agents of the fund, that's the authority that's required to expend the money.
The only thing that I wanted to say is that we went back to verify that each and every one of these capital reserves funds, when they were established, actually named the council as agents to expend. And that is true of all of them except one, and I'm not sure which one that is, Paul.
Fire.
Fire, what?
Fire Capital Reserve Fund. It was done in 1972.
For what? Ambulance?
No. Fire Capital Reserve Fund. It was done in 1972 to establish the fund for fire equipment, such as fire trucks, breathing apparatus, radios, related to the fire operations. It was changed a couple of times with amendments. The amendments are... A little more digging needs to be done, but it doesn't appear that the council was ever put on, or the Board of Selectmen at the time, was ever put on as agents to expend. That's the only capital reserve fund where the council now is not agents to expend.
So, I was gonna say, does that make it so that that would... All that would be required is a public hearing at that point for that, or does that have to go to a town meeting?
It would have to go to... It would have to be on another warrant article, right? So, Steve, do you know the manner in which the council might change that?
So, the...
For that one?
So, the agents can be named at a subsequent date, and so, a warrant article can be drafted, and we can help with the language to establish the agents of the fund.
And I believe on any change to a capital reserve fund, it requires a supermajority. Sixty-seven... Sixty-six point seven percent.
I should have paid you back there on the highway garage. Peter, did you have something? I'm sorry. Any further questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Just for clarification, you did suggest that the third alternative is to do some kind of a mixture of an omnibus article and individual article. So, we might group all of the ones that deal with equipment or something like that into a particular article, and then all the ones that deal with property valuation or something like that into a different...
So, that's your preference.
So, we can group it any way we want, as long as it's all on the warrant.
Exactly.
That's it. All right. Thank you.
Thank you for coming in.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
We have no public hearings, no legislative updates, no representatives here this evening. Town managers report.
Nancy was talking to them.
Okay.
They're both guilty, by the way, just to let you know.
Except for somebody who writes notes. But anyway, the July 2018 tax bills will be mailed by June 4th and will be due by July 6th. The library will be offering quiet study hours in the lower room for Merrimack students who are looking for a quiet place to study for finals on June 18th, 19th, and 20th. Please check their website for details. Merrimack TV will be covering the high school's 2018 graduation on Saturday, June 16th. The ceremony will be available online and the same day, and online the same day and played throughout the summer on Channel 21. Congratulations to the class of 2018. Thank you.
Okay, good. No consent agenda, and before we move on to old business, I would like to save Susan Lee from a night of eternity and... You gave me the punch, Mr. Chairman. That was gonna be my request. Without objection, I'd like to move item number 200, new business, forward. I'd have Susan's here to talk to us about the Economic Development Citizens Advisory Committee. Good evening, Susan.
Sometimes things... Good evening. Thank you for having me here. Susan Lee, Chairman of the Merrimack Economic Development Citizens Advisory Committee, fondly called EDCAC. Sometimes really good things do come to an end. And the EDCAC has had a really good eleven-year run. But we've sort of reached a point where, as a committee, we've done what we can do. We've met with Tim Thompson, and he has nothing for us to do. And as of June 30th, there will be no active members. So, it's a... It's time for you to say thank you for all your good work and hope that in the future there might be opportunities for people to volunteer for something that has sort of a specified purpose with a beginning and an end. It allows you to sustain passion a little bit longer than having something that's like, "Well, what are we doing this year? What are we doing that?" I think we've had some really great accomplishments. And I did a head count, and I've worked with 25 great people in town. It has been a very... You know, we've been very fluid who was on, and that's been great for us, because we've had lots of different opinions, lots of different views. But I think we are requesting that you formalize the committee, and it's disbanding at this point.
Well, I have to tell you, Susan, you guys have done some amazing things, because when the committee began, I happened to be here, and I was trying to... I had a difficult time getting my arms around what you would do and how you would go about it. And Bill was an early participant there, and I was very impressed, because you did do it. And... But I appreciate your thoughts about for a specific purpose at some point if something comes up, and I think that's probably a good and a wise... comes up, and I think that's probably a good and a wise idea.
I think it's probably the one concept that we have struggled with the most over the course of 11 years. It's like, okay, we've got this, we started it, we finished it, where do we go next? And then, you know, it's, we would come up with, we had some projects we started that kind of didn't pan out, but it got a lot of talk going on. We've been very supportive of Tim Thompson's department prior to that, Walter Warren, and we're sort of going out on an update of information on the town website that we were, are gonna supply to Tim, so that he can update and make it a little more user-friendly while he's waiting for his own standalone economic development website to come along. So, we kind of, and that's sort of where we started, we sort of did an overview of where the town was economically and from a workforce standpoint, and then it was like, well, there's nothing on the town website about what services are available, what processes you have to follow, and so, the committee got together and spent about 18 months putting information together and trying to organize it, and when Tim came in, he made a few tweaks to it, but the consensus of the committee was, as things, particularly social media and just accessing things through our cell phones, it had become a little cumbersome, and so, we kind of, our last project was to kind of revamp that so that there were fewer, where do I go, and more, okay, I'm here, let me flow to there, without having to do so many, you know, point and clicks to get, or finger touches to get to where you wanted to be. And so, that's what I'm here to ask you, to formally make a motion to disband the EDCAC.
Nancy?
Before a motion's made, it's on. I have two people watching me. I just really want to make a special note for you, Susan, you've been an originator with Bill at the state, you both started, but you've been the constant for the 11 years, and I think you have to be commended specifically for that loyalty and that focus that you've maintained for that entire time.
Thank you.
And it really has been, it was very busy in the beginning, I understand that, and you had times of being very quiet, and then the activity would increase, but you've always been the center of it, and I want to thank you for that, for those hours.
Thank you.
So, I will go ahead and make a motion to officially disband the EDCAC committee.
Seconded with regret.
With regret.
But fond appreciation for all the work they've done.
And all that.
All right, motion by Nancy, seconded by Bill Boyd. Would you like to speak to your motion, or are we...
I basically said it, and I think, and I think your idea regarding if there's specificity, then we can make a task group, and we'll keep you in mind.
Okay. Well, you know how to get in touch with me.
Yes, I do.
Perfect. Thank you, Susan.
And very quickly, I do want to echo Council Harrington's comments, thank you for all the work, it was a joy and a pleasure and a privilege to work with you.
I really enjoyed it.
So...
It was a good run.
It was.
I'd see, for the comment, I'll call the question, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, seven zero zero.
Thank you, Susan, thank you so much.
Thanks for hanging out.
All right, we'll be back on track. Item one under old business, it's tabled from our May 10th meeting and previously tabled from the meeting before that. I told, I chatted with Barbara quickly before the meeting began and about what she might be interested in doing, and so, you know, I don't know if you, which ones you don't?
Uh...
And the, was it the Merrimack Safeguard or the Heritage Merrimack Safeguard?
Yeah.
Okay.
I can do Heritage too.
What you would like?
I'll do the Safeguard, it's fine.
Perfect. All right, so, if everybody else is comfortable and happy with their choices for committee assignments, the changes will be Merrimack Safeguard, I'll be handing off to Barbara, and the, nobody had been on the technology committee, she's gonna do that as well.
Perfect.
So, all other pieces are good there?
Sounds good.
We don't need a vote for that, do we?
Yes, you should ratify.
We do.
You should ratify the committee assignments.
All right.
Let's make a motion to ratify the...
As presented. Motion by Nancy.
Seconded.
Seconded by Bill Boyd.
I talked to you about it.
This is a new beginning, I can see.
Very self-evident.
All right, I guess if there's no further comments, I'll call the question, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, seven zero zero. Thank you, thanks, Barbara. Next item under old business is discussion about our retreat that had to be postponed from tomorrow. Two days that had been brought forward were, what's what?
June 22nd or 29th?
Yeah. They're Fridays, June 22nd or 29th?
June 22nd?
Yes.
Well, it is May 24th, third. Unless it's earlier.
And Paula just brought four of those this evening to me.
I already know those days don't work, so, but I'm not gonna hold back the council.
I'm gonna ditto, Bill. I'm still hoping for Saturday.
Me too.
Twenty-ninth will not work for me.
Just for the record, Mr. Chairman, I'll be in Alaska at the end of June, so.
Appreciate it.
You know what, Council?
How about earlier June?
I was gonna, yeah, I didn't know, Paul, if...
Fifteen will work. It's a Friday.
I won't be here.
Okay.
Okay, it's too early, how much time do you need to get this stuff together? I guess that's...
Well, I like to make sure that I have everything, because I won't have the department heads there, and so, I'd like to be prepared and make sure that I have maps and I have, you know, all the various things that you might like, so it does take some time to gather it together. So, for instance, like with the MS4, some of you have not been here since the beginning of that, the inception of that issue, and so, I need to give you a synopsis of what has happened from the beginning to now and that kind of thing, so I need to have, and then, we want to do some really nice drawings of Watson Park that include South Heagan, the South Heagan River Trail in there, where the skating rink might go, and where the fence might go that Peter brought up, so that you can kind of see these kinds of things. So, maybe it's overkill, but I like to have some time to make sure that you will have all the information that you need to be able to really deliberate on these things.
How much time do you need?
Oh, was that the question originally? Oh, okay.
That's hilarious.
That is funny. I just rambled on for nothing.
Oh, no, I was...
Sometime in July, how about that?
July.
July?
Okay, because I'll put out, the first, the first, basically, the first week, I'm likely not gonna be here, I'm not gonna be here the 12th through the 15th, otherwise, July, I'm talking about July.
See, that's the difficulty with June and July, that's why we usually do it in May, before all the vacations and stuff. It makes it hurt.
Say it again.
That's why we always try to do it in May, because when you get into June and July, you get into legitimately vacations and all the rest, so.
And we're legitimately a quarter of the year done, so.
Well... Yep. I didn't recall I was doing it in May, we probably did, I just didn't recall that.
Always in May.
So, I was gonna go for the 22nd, but just to get it on the calendar and get it going, but you need till July.
I don't necessarily need till July, because it's, you know, that's near, June 22nd's near July, but it sounds like not everybody's available, it sounds like you have a...
Who's not available, the 22nd?
I'm in Alaska.
Yeah, oh, I thought you was 29th, 22nd?
Uh, July.
Tom is not available.
Somebody's mic, Mike's not on.
So, Bill and Tom?
June 21st through July 2nd. I will be, I will be in the 50th straight.
Okay.
I'm good for the 22nd.
22nd?
Yes. 29th, I'm out of the country.
I can do either or.
Yeah, I could do either or.
I could too.
22nd or 29th, I can do it.
Does it have to be a Friday?
I was gonna say, could it be a Monday or early in the week, so?
Could be a Monday.
I don't know.
I prefer Tuesday through...
19th?
Who prefers?
I don't know, I, it would be better Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, or Friday. Mondays are tough days.
Four?
Everything, for finance.
20th is better for me than...
Finance. 20th is good.
Does 20th work? We can bid farewell to Billy Boyd.
20th.
So, you're asking me to pack on Father's Day, is that what you're telling me?
Yeah.
No, you can pack on the 19th.
Don't bring shorts.
I'll make more.
Don't bring shorts.
So, you will be around on the 20th?
Oh, yeah.
Oh, well, that...
Yeah, I'll be there.
Wednesday, the 20th.
You can't have sick days yet.
Nope. All right. Even for civic duty?
Yeah. Just go tell them it's important.
Tell you what, why don't we do it on June 16th and we all convene at Ripfest?
All right.
Oh, we'd really be functioning.
How much work are we gonna get done?
Nothing we're gonna accomplish.
Why not?
So, are we gonna do Buckley's? And that's, that one's... Okay. All right, if that works for me, I don't know, I know, I wish you could be, Tom, but you'll get all the packing and everything nonetheless.
Yeah.
All right, if that works?
Okay, the 20th it is?
Yeah.
20th, I'm putting it in my calendar.
Lock and load.
All right.
Make it work.
Very good, thank you very much. All right. Item number one under new business, committee appointments.
We did that.
No, no, not assignments, appointments.
Appointments, yep.
We had...
Sorry.
Two folks come to...
Oh, that, okay.
Speak to us about their desire to be on the Parks and Rec Committee, and they were two great candidates. Tom, Tom was there, I was there.
Peter was there.
Laura James, Peter was there, and I didn't realize that we had a student council, a student rep to the Parks and Rec Committee, I didn't even remember that, and so, it was nice to see she's, Abigail Cody's a freshman, I think she told us, and a freshman, and so, I think it's a great perspective to bring into the Parks and Rec Committee.
Nice.
But, so, I don't know, either of you have anything to speak to?
No, I was really impressed with talking to both of them, Cory and Abigail. Abigail, yeah.
Yep.
Seemed to be very interested. Cory is, was on the EDCAC Committee, and is new in town, and relatively new in town, and interested in getting involved and being a part of the community, and I think that's a great way for him to do that, and it was really exciting to see Abigail and her background, her interest in wanting to be a part of the community as well, so, I think there was great that they stepped forward.
All right, would anybody like to make a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I move that the, I'm sorry, did you want to speak?
I will not step on the toes of the motion master.
I'm not the motion master.
A motion master.
You have to stand up first.
What is that, like a new device now from Rockwell, the maker of the thigh master, now it's motion masters? Go on, Counselor Albert, I will defer.
Peter had to stand up first, I witnessed it.
Here, sorry about that.
That's all right.
I wasn't paying attention to the right side.
I make a motion to accept the application of Cory Davenport and Abigail Cody to the Parks and Recreation Committee.
Seconded.
Motion by Counselor Albert, seconded by Counselor Boyd.
Friendly amendment, Mr. Chair?
For full terms?
Yeah. Cory is for a full term, and Abigail is the student rep for, student rep.
Is the student rep one year?
Yeah, I believe so.
Okay, understood, accepted.
So moved.
Perfect. All right, any further discussion on that? With great thanks, I'm glad to see them come on board, I'll call the question, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, seven zero zero.
I do, let me sign it, I'll hand it on down, there's a big pile here also of some signatures.
Do I do this?
We have to sign those, those are, so they can be appointed and sworn in, and then...
If they want to sign it black, I don't know if they told you that.
Is that blue?
Hands off. The official color, Peter?
You have to sign these, Peter, I guess.
Get a whole pile of it.
You what?
This is for you to sign.
This is for you.
Oh. I've been away.
Okay, I'll move on while this, these things are getting signed. Item number three under new business is consideration of a donation for Kids Cove Playground. I guess you're gonna be presenting this for Matthew? This is council to consider a donation in the amount of $1,226.93 from the Rotary Club of Merrimack and the Parks and Recreation Department to be used to replace the existing trash barrels in Kids Cove with a combination trash slash recycling barrel unit pursuant to RSA 31:95B and Charter Article 8, Section 15.
Many of you may recall that the Rotary did the big remodel down there several years ago, where they did the big fundraising to get all new equipment and all new fixtures for the park down at the ball field, the vice ball field. They actually, what donations exceeded, the donations exceeded their expenditures, so they had a little money reserved for replacement of slides and swings as needed or what is needed down at the park. Matt went to the Rotary and asked them to, there was a need for these trash slash recycling bins, the Rotary was generous enough, because they had the extra money from when they raised the money for the playground, to donate for this purpose, and they thought it was a good idea.
Excellent. Again, they're huge. Any further thoughts or discussion?
There are 66 pounds.
Just a question.
Yes, Barbara?
Are we currently recycling at Kids Cove?
No, it's just...
I always walk by and take the little hiking pot.
No, there isn't, there's only the big move barrels that everybody throws everything in. This will help them to recycle more.
Obviously, there's trash pickup.
Yeah.
What happens with the recyclables?
Same thing.
They'll get picked up as well?
DPW goes, picks up, they'll...
Okay, yeah, we just don't wanna put something in place and then it's overflowing, I'll look at a place and...
There's trash pickup, they'll be the same kind of container, when they pick up the trash, they'll pick up the recyclables at the same time.
Perfect. Thank you.
Excellent, thank you, Barbara. Any further comments?
Well, it's interesting, if I may, in the letter from Matt to Eileen, he also says that currently there's no recycling barrels at the parks, and this would be the first one, if it works out, then it will slowly expand into the other parks as well, so it's an encouraging improvement.
I think people, and they seem to, in the picture, they seem to differentiate nicely recycling versus trash, because I find so many people just...
Throw the trash in the recycle...
I almost did it at the luncheon for Public Works, and Tom says, that's recycling, that's not garbage, and so, I need something that's a little more brazen, it sticks out for them, but, yeah, so, all right, I'll, if, oh my...
Mr. Chairman, I move that the town council accept a donation in the amount of $1,226.93 from the Rotary Club of Merrimack to the Parks and Recreation Department to be used to replace existing trash barrels in Kids Cove with a combination trash slash recycling barrel unit pursuant to RSA 31:95-B and Charter Article 8, Hyphen 15. Furthermore, that the manager or per proxy be authorized to sign anything necessary to accept the donation.
Motion by Bill Boyd, seconded by Tom Thornton. Any further discussion? Seeing now to call the question, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, seven zero zero.
And very briefly, Mr. Chairman, if I could, directly to Eileen.
Through me?
Through, through the chair, excuse me, thank you. Thank you for the correction, no, through you, to the town manager.
I'm sorry, Bill, I apologize.
I've been dove slapped, I like that. It's finally, enjoy it, enjoy it.
And you were saying, sir.
So, are we going to be doing any type of review of Kids Cove in terms of painting, maintenance, looking at the sand at the, at the playground? I don't know if that was on the agenda.
That is not something I know the answer to, but I'll get it for you.
Okay, I just happened to walk through there a couple of days ago, and I don't think anything is in disrepair, but I think...
Needs a little bit cleaned up, spruced up.
Just a little TLC will be nice.
Okay.
I saw a lot of families going down there, I just want to make sure that everything's safe, everything's clean, and...
Sure.
That kind of thing. Thank you, appreciate it.
Thanks, Bill. Thanks, Bill. All right. Next item on the agenda, the approval of minutes from the May tenth, two thousand and eighteen meeting.
Mr. Chairman, I move the Town Council meeting minutes of Thursday, May tenth, two thousand and eighteen, with the following modification. Page three, line twelve. The vote was indicating a yea of zero, a nay of five. If I remember correctly, I made the motion to table, and I went down in flames. And I certainly want the record to reflect that I continue a pattern of picking peyote causes where I go down in flames here in the Town Council.
Is that a correction?
Yes, sir. I voted yes, is what I'm saying.
No, actually, I don't think you did.
Actually, I, I did. I was the only one that voted to table.
Okay.
I made the motion.
I realized you did. I was a little surprised, but I thought I recalled that you had voted no along with the rest of us, so I could be wrong.
We can check the video and correct it based on the, the video, the video or the audio or whatever we check lately, the digital media.
Please make sure we know the answer to that question, though. So let's see.
I'll let you know the outcome.
Me voting, me voting against my own motion? I would be embarrassed.
It surprised me, it surprised me when it happened, but I, I thought maybe you just decided after the discussion that you didn't want to go with it.
I.
Maybe I'm wrong.
They trust, they trust you through Finley to Bill. I, we trust you, but we're just going to verify, okay?
Thank you, Ronald Reagan.
Well, after all that, Bill, is that it for corrections?
That's all I had, unless anybody else has anything.
Anything further? No, Tom.
Thanks.
Koenig, that is.
There are a couple of minor things. On the last page, fifteen of fifteen, line seventeen, it talks about the minutes of the Town Council budget meeting of April twenty-sixth, and it was actually just a regular meeting. It wasn't a budget meeting. And then on line thirty-six, it talks about these being the notes from the May tenth special meeting in the Town Council, and it wasn't a special meeting, it was a regular meeting again. So I don't know whether that's a cut and paste that's going on, or if we could just pull out budget and special, that would just clean that up.
Looking easy.
Otherwise, it looked good to me. Thanks. And I'll second the motion to approve.
All right.
More motion?
I'm assuming there's no more.
Bill motioned.
Yeah, Bill did make a motion at the beginning, with the modifications. All right, and that I'm believing, it means there's no other changes, so all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed abstain.
Abstain.
Abstain?
Abstain.
Abstain.
Actually, you were present, though. I wasn't.
Well, not for the whole thing.
Because I was partially, I was there electronically for a few of the votes.
That's right, there was.
Yes.
So magically, he was lost.
Eventually, I was going.
For the record, the reason I abstain, because I wasn't there for the complete meeting.
All right.
Because I read it, it was the last transmission.
Live via satellite.
And that's a fourth, four, zero, three vote, with Council Albert, Barbara, and Nancy abstaining. Thank you. All right. Now that I've lost my front page, what else do we have left here?
Comments for the, yes.
Isn't this amazing? I buried my cover sheet.
I feel you.
Comments from the press, comments from the public, comments from the press, comments from the council. Nancy.
I'd just like to be the first one to welcome Barbara officially, in front of the whole community, to the council.
Thank you.
I look forward to working with you, and as I said to you before the meeting, any one of these people will be supportive of you. We're a good group. We just, we agree to disagree, and, and that's fine, but feel free to call me, I'm sure anyone, for advice or just an opinion, or, because it's going to be a little while. I was telling her about acronyms, which seems to us, of course, will not be, of course, to you, so, so feel free, so welcome.
So, yeah, speak up.
So, so is Nancy's the first?
Hey, it was me. Well, I was just, I was just, through Tom to Finley, I just wanted to say that I, hey, sue me. I just wanted to say that when, when I was doing the, I was doing something about the PFOA and all this different kinds of things, and DES and all the Clark, and so I wrote an email to you guys, and then I wrote a separate translation for Barbara about what does this mean, and what is that acronym, and all that kind of thing.
It is amazing.
So I was recognizing how many of those things are in there.
We all have to try to remember that, too.
Tom, I.
I withdraw my comment.
No, 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 fine.
No, I was going to say Nancy was the first to welcome you, but I was the first to nominate you.
I remember that. I saw that. Thank you.
Tom?
I have a tissue here.
You all set?
No, I, yeah, I'm all set.
I, well, actually, I want to just real quickly mention that I went, I saw a post on the Merrimack forum, which I don't always see, but I occasionally do, and it was, it was concern of, I don't, I think the message originated from Gail Shaw. I'm not positive of that, though. But the message was that, you know, that the town didn't care, and there was a lot of problems down at Watson Park. And so I, Kyle was meeting with Gail Shaw and Kathy Comar.
Comar.
And so I joined them, and the, the four of us went around, four of us went around the park, and what, what the real, what the problem was, was debris.